Take into consideration all the...
Good morning, everyone. It's 10 o'clock. Go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Professor, we thank you so much. It's beautiful. Very warm. We ask people, as is meeting, back to you after so long. The residents of Scory County. And I was little past that. We remember you and your birth. Well, that's how they say it. Forgive us, I'm going to see you in Chicago. Please, I'm not praying.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All honor, the Texas flag. Let's just be Texas, one state, under God, one nation.
Good morning, everybody. At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No criminal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Your speaker will be limited to three minutes.
Can you just stand up right here?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Toni Valdez. I live on County Road 370 in Precinct 2. Lived there for 16 years. In the last three years, we've had four residents added within a mile on 370. Two of these families moved from Washington State to retire in Scory County. November 9th, after many emails and ignored phone calls, myself and three other ladies were to have a meeting with our Commissioner Doug Scott about our terrible road. I'm not here about my road. I'm here about the way four ladies were treated at this meeting by two men, Doug Scott, Jeff Mitchell, and two criminals. Doug Scott immediately and very rudely stated, "I can tell you right now, I'm not paving your road." And therein, we were treated disrespectful and our questions were smirked at and laughed at. Some of the statements made by Scott and Mitchell were, "You want to come run the blade? I'm not going to fix your road or call you back because I have no respect for you. I'm tired of having to hear about your road and how it's damaging your vehicles. Our budgets have been cut. These pictures in this courthouse test our car budget. My wife drives 90 miles an hour down our road because she says it's a smooth ride. We've got a golf course we'll save for a dollar. The roads are in bad shape because the previous commissioner didn't take care of them. Did you ever see Sean on a blade? Sheriff's Department isn't doing their job patrolling the roads." These statements and more with smirks and rudeness. At one point, one of the ladies had to tell Precinct 4 Commissioner she wasn't speaking to him. She was speaking to Precinct 2 Commissioner. I'm not sure why Precinct 4 Commissioner was there other than to intimidate or answer questions for Doug. I feel we were ridiculed and bullied by these men. Had this been four men instead of ladies, would this meeting have gone different? Is this how you would want your wife, mother, or daughter treated? Is this how we treat people that have chosen Scory County to retire in? Is this how we treat our tax-paying voting citizens? Maybe instead of pointing fingers at other commissioners, the Sheriff's Department and Kinder Morgan, show us some respect and the other taxpayers and other commissioners and departments. Respect and appreciation. The way these men treated at this meeting was not acceptable at all. Myself and the other ladies were treated unbelievably unrespectful when all we wanted was a solution to our road. All we got was smirked at and ridiculed. We later discovered, without the help of our commissioner, there's a grant right here in this courthouse to have 370 paved. As I said, I'm not here about my road. I'm just here to tell you how we were treated at that meeting. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kristen Young and I am a resident of County Road 370 in Precinct 2. I'm here today to discuss a meeting I attended with three other residents on November 9th of this year as I think it is important for all of you to be aware of what goes on behind closed doors. To say that I am upset with how the meeting was conducted is an understatement. We had gathered to meet with the Commissioner of our precinct and were not only met by him, but also three other men, one being the Commissioner of Precinct 4. When we began to express our concerns over the safety and condition of our county road, we were met with hostile responses and excuses such as, "I'm tired of receiving phone calls about your road and I don't return your calls because I have no respect for you." The other three ladies and I had come to discuss solutions, solutions that we had been trying to discuss for months, only to be met by full voicemail boxes and unreturned phone calls. However, I will say when my husband called, he received an almost immediate response. I do recall quite vividly being scoffed and laughed at when I expressed how concerned I was about driving my small vehicle down our washboard road and fishtailing several times while traveling at no more than 20 miles per hour. The solution given by the Commissioner was to slow down then and try going 15, only to be contradicted by another Commissioner, not even of our precinct, by saying, "My wife drives 90 down our dirt road. She says it's a smoother ride." When I asked if they drive down our road after fixing it to test the condition, they all had responded that they hadn't and that if I had a problem with the way they do it, would I like to get on a blade and try it myself? I would just like to know, had my husband or father been in that room as well, would we have been met with the same energy and tone? It is a shame that four women cannot attend a meeting with a county-elected official and trust that our concerns be taken seriously. These officials are put into office by the people and their job, at least my understanding of it, is to serve the people to the best of their ability. The excuses we were met with were more so pointing fingers at everyone but themselves. Examples are previous commissioners, other county employees, Kinder Morgan, the Sheriff's Department, to even the country club golf course and the artwork on the walls of this building. If this is how seriously I am to be taken by the official we elected to sit in this chair and serve us, then I know how I will be voting come election time. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that has anything that's not in the agenda that did? Thank you, ladies. All right, old business court to discuss and consider increasing precinct project schedule.
Still working on our concrete. We've got our culverts in and hopefully be able to install them in the next week. I hear the middle decent.
This week is going to be cold. I think it's wet and walking trail.
Yeah. It's looking good. Cut perimeter, we're bladed, got the interior bladed.
Go back out there. Trees, lots of water.
Okay.
We started working on 2173. We haven't covered any of that because still got water across it.
We'll get it all next year. Anything else on that precinct? Court discussed and consider bids for courthouse. A key repair. We got one, got another email this morning that says that they just realized that it was supposed to be mailed and not emailed. We discussed the one. MCR, the mental restoration. It shows here two granite panels as shown on the report. Reset and anchor one panel that is protruded out over an inch. Patch socket, patch socket as shown on the report and paint entire socket to match. Sealant replacement, all granite to granite and granite to concrete joint shall have old sealant removed and new urethane sealant installed. Tool to a watertight condition. Color to be selected by owner from the manufacturer's standard color chart. And they shall accomplish the above outlined work for the sum of $76,409. Only if you take full responsibility.
Well, it's got to be fixed, doesn't it?
It does. It's been, 2008 was when they did the caulking. So it's at least 15 years since that was done and you can go around the building and see where it's coming apart.
Are they going to repair areas like where the uprights come down that support the building? The concrete that's laid over with gravel and mastic?
That was not a part of it. The main concern is the two panels.
And caulking all of them. They're going to cau all panels, right?
Correct.
And we have the same problem with the steps. Again, they're starting to come out. That's probably not in it either.
The steps are starting to come out.
The caulking.
The tuck.
Right. That's a Yankee.
I can, yeah. I can verify that it's stairs as well.
They were really bad back then in 2008. We were repairing underneath the steps there.
Yeah, paid, patched socket as shown on the report. Painted entire socket to match. All granite to granite and granite to concrete joint shall have old sealant removed. So that makes it sound, makes it sound like the stairs as well.
It does. But there are some of those areas where those, the areas that are white and have the gravel on the stuff that is actually rusting and starting to come apart. There's a pretty good sized hole there on the east side and the south. I don't even know what you call it.
I'm going to call them pillars.
Pillars is fine.
Sure. Oh, they're here. I'll ask them to just price on that as well. They're the exact that could have stood.
So that was the last one.
Yes.
And the warranty is what?
The person thingy about that.
One-year warranty on the workmanship. Of course, I can have county attorney look at it. All of that as well. No warranty provided for material and equipment, which they do not install or provide.
It would be different, yes. And I don't know if we can add on just because they're here, patent for being or whatever.
So we'll have to rebid the whole thing just to make sure. And this bid would be no good for that, what we're doing. If we're going to add something to it, we're going to have to change the specs and rebid it.
I mean, if we're going to repair part of it, we should repair it all, okay? Because it is dilapidated. There's not a lot of it that I'm seeing.
Okay. Okay, so is that what you want to do? You want to table this or no action on this and rebid the whole thing?
They could do it after.
All right.
We could wait, we still need to change it.
Well, they'll have to come back and look at it again. For the other? Uh, for work. Maybe we can take pictures of it and show it to the city that can visit. And send it out to all of the companies that did. Put the big specs out. When do you want those back by? What do we want, two, three weeks?
Last minute, two weeks.
I don't think they'll ever get it done. And we've got to post it and all of that. When we're second, who'd be our first meeting? If we approve, well, that'd be special.
I wonder also if they are even able to do it this time of year at a certain temperature. Has to be at a certain temperature probably. Anyway.
16th, yeah? Just fix part of it. So how about January 16th? Calendar? Let's set this aside for just a moment. Let's discuss and consider setting commissioners' court meeting for calendar year 2024. So that we can go ahead and set the dates. Third Tuesday of each month will be the regular Scory County Commissioners' Court meeting date. We'll go ahead and continue as we have been.
Setting commissioners' court meeting dates.
All in favor? So since we said for the third Tuesday, 16th is the third Tuesday of January. We have to give them time to get through the holidays and have a little time to do, give us time to do the postings. 16th, okay with y'all for bids?
After you send it back out. Tell them to email them.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
I make a motion, we go back out for bids for the facade repair of the courthouse. Bids will be open January 16th by way of commissioners' court meeting.
Okay. All right, court discussed and consider setting county holidays for calendar year 2024. Do you have a copy? The only one that's not on the actual date is Texas and Phoenix Day. That would be March 1st instead of March 2nd. It's Friday. And court hasn't asked it not to add the additional holiday into the schedule. That was not added.
That would be 16 instead of 15, unless you replace it with a different.
So I'll entertain a motion on holiday schedule unless there's something we see you want to change.
Let us make a motion that we keep the holiday just written in our packets.
All in favor? Court discussed and consider setting a date for public hearing on modifying speed limit on County Road 132.
Hey, so we had a death out on County Road 132 some months ago. And of course, text dot always has a meeting concerning whatever the death is regardless of how it was caused. This really had nothing to do with speed limit, but they asked that we look at it. Well, we've got a dip there and then that curve is pretty sharp going back down 132 to the service road. So text dot's road comes right there where 132 turns east off of 84. And so I'm asking the court to consider a 45 mile an hour speed limit sign set about 50 yards to the east of the, on 132.
January 16th, okay with you? All in favor?
So we'll have a hearing on that day?
Yes, sir. Court discussed and consider authorizing county treasurer to move 100,000 Texas class capital expenditures for the purchase of two Striker Lucas chest compression systems and one Hamilton T1 ventilator.
Actually, got through it. Wow.
This is a purchase of equipment that you've already looked at and got court approval on prior?
Yes. Most pieces of equipment I have gotten court prior approval on in the past. This will just give us the ability to purchase one for each primary truck for a total of three. Three chest compression devices and three Hamilton total. We've purchased them over the years and this will allow us to complete that goal.
Okay. It's just moving the funds to be able to do that.
I'd motion we will, county attorney remove funds from Texas class capital expenditure for the purchase of two Striker Lucas chest compression.
Say it. Yes. Make a motion to privilege.
All right, court discussed and consider request from Ian Masserberg and Jason Tyler to sell the 2018 Ford Transit pipe to ambulance to ambulance network incorporated. You remember we got one bid for that. It was nowhere near what we hoped it would be. You got, how much, they're offering how much for that?
$27,000.
Good job, though. Quite a bit more than bid prior.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if I can do this or not. I'm going to try anyway. Basically, to take those funds once received and put them in Texas class.
Depends on when they're received. If they come in this year, they have to be certified first because it's additional revenue. If they come in next year, it still has to be certified. At some point, they can be put in there, but I believe it needs to come back through court at that time because of the certification of the revenue.
Your budget amendment.
It has to be approved through the certification first and then a budget amendment, or not a budget amendment. Then it can be like we do when, at UOL, when we get that the court approves placing those funds into Texas class at that time. But we have to certify the revenue first because we don't have that as seller assets budgeted for that, either this year or next year. So that has to come first and then the other part.
It can all be done before the 19th?
Even if it doesn't come in until after.
Right.
It's not likely that it's going to be fully received and everything in this year's because of the holiday hours. So if it comes in after the 19th, it can be received in 2024 and then certified and placed in into Texas class. But it has to get certified before it can be placed in Texas class.
So we'll do it through the other.
The process.
You entertain a motion?
I'd do a motion that we allow the ambulance to be sold for $27,000. Thanks, Derek. Sell it to Analyst Network Incorporated, please. Thank you.
All right, court discussed and consider renewal of the TCP RS retirement plan.
I will say that when we did the budgets, we did it at the 10.42. I talked to Erica. She can come next year in March so we know pre-budget time, kind of what we're looking at instead of doing it at, you know, when it's kind of, you know, after the fact. So, and then she said that she would come and discuss it with the court in March so we know before budget time. And there was a slight, I mean, there is a difference. This year it was the 10.44 and next year it's going to be the 10.42, so.
Okay, so .02 more than what?
Yes.
All in favor? I don't think y'all had the coffee this morning. I don't think y'all had the coffee this morning.
I wouldn't have any rest today yet.
All right, court discussed and consider interlocal agreement with the city of Snyder for emergency management coordinator. You have that in your packet as well. We worked on that a couple of months. Equitable to all sides. It's fair for everyone involved. Yes, county attorney will get it.
So this is separate from the one that you're actually working on?
Correct. Yeah, this is specifically for emergency management coordinator. One of the payment, number six, county payment obligation. We discussed $50 for that and what we're... We looked at setting one amount in there, but costs will go up over the... As everything does, costs are going to go up. So you didn't want to set one. It's just going to be happening. The expenses, cities put budgeting expenses.
I make a motion, we approve our local agreement with the city of Snyder for emergency management coordinator.
All in favor? Just a question. I know when we have these emergency management, when we go out and we have a, has said for trial of this that we have a lot of the people involved. And I talk of Cogdo, the college, where we have a drill. And I'm wondering, maybe we'd be interested in some form. Maybe we could talk to them about it. Helping us take care of this because they're all involved. They all need us.
And I brought it up to all of the entities at one time to divide it up equally between all of us. It was no interest at the time. However, in the future, once we see what all is involved and what all they can do, this emergency management coordinator can do for each of the entities, I'm hoping that we can get them to come in.
Certainly. Should be, shouldn't even have to discuss it really. We're all involved. They're all going to need them. Whoever's managing it.
I agree.
Makes sense, okay.
All right, court discussed and consider approval to apply for hazard mitigation grant. To say mitigation grant. See, I did the other one easily. All right, this is a, you'll have in your packet a notice funding opportunity. They're key down. What Jay's looking at is the sirens to come back at the city. You're applying for a different one for the city.
For the city and county, but we're going to done iron hermally.
Correct. So there would be, if we got the grant, it would get the sirens back at those locations.
Did you figure out whether it was an 80/20 or 90/10? It's a 75/25 grant. It does have the ability, once it goes through the process, it can go up to an 80/20 or a 90/10. But it's set at 75/25 over a three-year period.
There's one that, excuse me, that y'all applied for that did go up to a 90/10, right?
Right. It started off as a 75/25 and by the time we submitted it, it was up to 90/10.
And it can.
So this would be, we would pay for three years on it or?
Yes, uh, the twenty-five percent can come out over a three-year time period. It doesn't all have to come out the first year.
So how much were you looking at?
The best estimate I can get without going for bids. Ballpark, two hundred thousand, that's for the whole system countywide. That's the sirens, the radios, transmitters, the stuff. That we can set them off from our phones or the station or the E O C sheriff's office, wherever. Poles, electricity, solar panels, whatever we use.
And again, it should be all entities for covering the whole. Everybody's involved. Potentially fifty thousand, possibly less than that over three-year period. Right. Application period is February second. We discussed the. You mentioned how having an outside contractor actually to the.
Yes, they spread us use an outside contractor, uh. To help with it. Stay on theme. If I go out, if I ask Sean for a bid, I can't use Sean. Get Sean to bid for the project. It's theme us backwards, so.
So we may be coming back to look at a contractor to actually do all that aspect of it. City use Jacob and Martin. I don't know if it's a big process we have to go through to do that or not, so I've got to get more information on that aspect of it. And I don't know, when would they, so after the grant is awarded, then you'd meet the contractor, correct? Okay, so there's time to figure that out.
Yeah, play us some time to figure that out.
But today we're just asking, uh, if we can, if we can apply for that grant.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, apply for the hazardous mitigation grant.
He's away.
Keep it up.
All in favor? Thank you. Court to discuss and consider bid on text deed and property charge for trust property in the city of Snyder. On occasion, a thousand dollars was the bid, the winning bid and the address.
Bid on text deed and property charge for trust property in the city of Snyder.
Second. All in favor? Court to discuss and consider certification of additional revenues in the form of supplement, supplement payment from tax for roof damage and we'll go ahead and consider the text out grants.
The roof damage was for precinct four barn and office. The amount we received is eight thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Um, that's minus five thousand for deductible. And then the text dot grant is the last submission that I sent in on this grant, so it's a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one forty-seven point four that we received back and. Pretty much has already been. Spent again.
Better make a motion that we set the, or certify the additional revenue from PAC and text dot. Court to consider approval of line item transfers.
I'll start with line item transfers. First county clerk, photo registration, five thirty-two, item records and, um, the postage costs for all the mailouts and everything that's gone up considerably. And it's going to begin in January.
What's it going to?
Sixty-eight, seven, what is it, sixty-five, sixty-eight, something like that. It's going up at least two or three more cents in January. Um, quarter reporter, education, one sixty-five, other, out of other equipment, he had to get his renewed certification. Uh, this one is treasurer's office, office supplies thirteen eighty-five, as, out of education and training. A current shared printer is not working due to the high volume of paper that is printed. The printer, they decided that each have their own printer in their offices. Um, youth center operating supplies two hundred, out of program supplies over budget due to inflation. This is road and bridge and it's a piece of equipment that precinct four is purchasing from precinct one through a line on transfers. We're just trying to bring the funds. It's two thousand dollars from precinct four's other equipment, two precinct one's equipment, five thousand and over. And then this one's precinct four tires and tubes, two thousand, out of road materials and it's developed one.
Did you say five thousand, remember?
Yes, because he's putting the money into his over five thousand line. He's taking it out of his other line.
Okay.
What do you buy?
I don't know what happened to mine. I'll head to budget amendments. There is a budget amendment for precinct two road materials in construction, ninety-two thousand. And permanent improvements, and this is the non-departmental, um. Department improvement labor and materials to replace the sheet metal and trim on the fuel island, six thousand three hundred, and then the door, seven hundred and twenty dollars for total of seventy, seven thousand twenty dollars.
Little building on the fuel station. Uh, how about account payable?
Account payable, one million nine hundred and twelve thousand, two ninety-five, seventy-six. We have one more court. Get all your bills in for this year. If they're not in for next, that Wednesday, then I get paid to point for a fourth.
All in favor? Oh, now y'all are in hurry. I just.
Whatever that Wednesday is before the nineteen.
Did I say it on favor again? I need to be careful. Eli. Here's the agreement.